Good morning, everybody. I would like to call to order the Dutch County IDA Board of Directors' regular meeting today. Sarah, could you please take a roll call vote?
Yes.
For our tenants.
Tim Dean.
Here.
Mark Doyle.
Yeah.
Kathy Bauer.
Here.
Amy Bombadiri. Jamie Pecone.
Here.
Don Sagliano.
Here.
Al Torghiani.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
Okay. Just to remind everybody of the conflict of interest disclosures. If anybody has a conflict that they're aware of based on the agenda, please let us know now. Or if for some reason you become aware of one during the meeting, please let us know so that we can recuse you. Is there any conflict as of now? Okay. Proof of meeting and those posted?
Yes.
Okay. Any bills in communications?
No bills in communications.
Okay, we have minutes from our February 8th meeting. Did anybody have?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Under. Interests?
Yes.
Is that purposes of me having to recuse myself from one of the items?
Oh, yes, that would be where.
Okay, so item number, letter B. I'm gonna have to step out because I live at Eastdale.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Anybody else? Okay, so we have minutes from the February 8th meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or changes to those minutes? And if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Kathy, Mark second it. Okay, Sarah, would you please take a vote for the approval of that?
Mr. Chairman, am I allowed to vote on this? Was that the Zoom one where?
You.
He was at Zoom the last meeting.
He didn't count towards.
He was remote.
He was remote, but his camera didn't work.
Yeah, you can approve.
Okay, that's all. I don't wanna.
No, no problem. Okay.
Okay. Mark Doyle?
Yes, approved.
Kathy Bauer?
Approved.
Jamie Pecone?
Approved.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Al Torghiani?
Approved.
Tim Dean.
Approved. Okay, next we have the report of the treasurer.
Yes, looking at the balance sheet, we have 3.5 million. There, we have also a liability of the pilot payments that still have to go out. We received 944,000 in and a payment. So that's down in accounts payable section. Looking at the P and L. I separated out the pilot payments on the P and L. So looking at the revenue, the total revenue without the pilot payments, 230,000 to a budget of 447,000. I'm favorable to budget for 197,000. The total income would be 1.2 million. Looking at the expenses, we have.
Excuse me. So the administrative fees that you received.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I was gonna say, that's Can-Am is 218,000. And then there's two small ones of 350 and 375 for Eastdale, 23 and 32.
Okay.
Looking at the expenses, without the pilot payments, 219,000 to a budget of 689,900. We have total expenses of 1.2 million for net income of $30,760 to a negative budget of 242,900. So we are favorable right now, 274,000. And again, that's the annual budget, so we've only two months in.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. You do not need to approve that, it was just a report. Okay, report of committees, finance and audit for discussion and approval of the 2022.
Okay. Starting on page one, they've moved the opinions and comments and everything from the beginning of this now. The agency did not adopt any significant new accounting practices for last year. The auditors did not identify any significant or unusual transactions. We follow the United States for America Accounting Policies for Government Accounting Standards Board. There were no audit adjustments. They're not, the auditors were not aware of any misstatements, and they did not encounter any disagreements with management. There was no significant issues arising from the audit. So now, if we go in several pages to number five.
Page five?
Page five. We, during the 2022 year, held 22 public meetings. We had 10 regular board meetings, three special meetings, an annual meeting, two committee meetings, and six public hearings. Underneath that is some of the projects that we approved. We did the approval of resolution for Visions Hotel. That was in March. In May, we did the final resolution for One Duchess Plaza. In June, we did an amendment to MHTC. In October, we did an amendment, again to MHTC, another Eastdale project. In November, we did an amendment for Reynolds Asset Management. December, we did the final resolution for T-Rex High Park. And also in December, we did the Can-Am Hudson Valley Logistics. Now, we go over to the actual financial statements. On page six, we had, we ended the year with cash and equivalents of $2.5 million as compared to 2021 of 3.1 million. We had total assets, sorry, we also had the Cricket Valley deposit, which remained constant except for some interest of $1.7 million, with total assets ending at $4.3 million, down slightly from 2021 of 4.9 million. For our liabilities, our accounts payable was down to 45,000. We had our liability for Cricket Valley, which remains constant, is 1.7 million. And the total liabilities of 1.8 million. We had a net ending position of 2.5 million. That's down 300,000 from 2021. Okay, so if we go on to page seven with our revenues and expenses. So for 2022, we had total operating revenues of 250,000. That's down from 2021 of 1.3 million. That's really timing, size of projects. We had very little projects, which we really budgeted for in for the year. We knew these numbers were going to be down. We had our projects, our spending, operating expenses for projects, professional service contracts was up slightly at 637,000 from 618,000. Administrative expenses were down slightly. So we had a net operating loss of 403,000 compared to the prior year of a net income of 677,000. Let's see. The next page is just the statement of cash flows. It says exactly the same thing, where our net ending position was of 2.5 million and our operating loss of $408,000. Yes.
I have a sort of interest. Jane, can you check with the audit firm on the statement of cash flows? Below the cash equivalents on the bottom of page eight, it's to the reconciliation of operating income or loss. But then it starts with the connotation of operating gain or loss. I believe that should be operating income slash loss.
Thank you, then. And then for the.
You can check with them.
Okay. For the footnotes, there's no changes from year over year as far as the wording or anything that they point out. And they, on page 11, we had, we, the GAFC issued a new statement of 94 to 91 in regards to various changes for this agency. There are no changes that would affect the agency. Page 12, we have a schedule of our conduit indebtedness. Balance for the year 2022 is 19,774 to 90. And pages 13 through 14, let's see. The next several pages to page 19 are all our projects with the tax exemptions, the FTEs and jobs that we created and retained. And then the very last page, there was no internal control findings and there was no compliance findings. Any other questions?
So just a couple of observations from me. Did I hear correctly that we had no correcting journal entries?
That's correct.
Compliments to our staff for doing a great job. That's, that's exactly what we want to hear. It's always nice to, it shows that we really keep an eye on the numbers. So thank you very much, Amy, for that. The other thing is, I just want to make sure that everybody in the board is comfortable. As you, as Kathy mentioned, we, we have to do a budget. And we even do a five-year budget, right? But our income is not predictable from year to year. And so we, we try and be conservative in our, you know, maintaining a cash balance. But, you know, there are years when we have a negative, you know, operation. And I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody's comfortable and not alarmed by that situation as something that we do anticipate. Does anybody have any questions about that?
About the budget?
Yeah, well, about the budget and how some, you know, this particular year we, you know, we.
I have a, I have a question on the area that speaks to the schedule of other information where it lists each individual project. And it brings up the sales tax exemption for a real property tax exemption. And the real property tax exemption is what the real estate taxes would have been had the project not secured IDA exemptions. Then it speaks to the payment alone of taxes. That would be what those particular projects actually paid in taxes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, some of them have sales tax exemptions and some of them don't. Is that based upon the timing when the project went in?
Right.
If they were fully built out, they would have, they would have already used a sales tax exemption?
Yes.
But that's not saying that they wouldn't have had a sales tax exemption in prior years.
Correct.
And have all the firms filed all their necessary annual reporting?
Yes.
Thank you. And I appreciate those questions. You know, different members of this board have different backgrounds. And so having somebody on the board that can ask those type of questions for us is greatly appreciated.
I have a one question.
Sure.
And that is with the, sort of the estimated taxes in order to come up with the, you know, the exemption. So that is a number that comes from the original pilot agreement? Or is it a changing number?
It's a number that comes from the municipality's assessor's office.
Okay. Every year, so it's.
Every year, yeah. So we have.
Excellent.
So the staff has quite a bit of work to do on that to get all that information from the various towns and taxing jurisdictions.
Yes.
Jurisdiction.
Yes, so you can see Jane has colored her hair. And then some, right?
I did not say that.
Yes, it's a lot of chasing that Jane has to do.
In my case of being, I pulled out my hair. Okay, any other questions? So we do need to approve this, is that correct? Okay. So would somebody be willing to make a motion to approve the 2022 audit?
I would be willing to make the motion.
Unless I check.
Just that small minor.
Oh, that's.
I brought up whether it's operating income or loss or.
Just the wording of that particular thing. It's not a adverse effect, it would be just a change in the description.
No, it would have any effect on, it's just for presentation purposes.
Okay.
So I make that motion.
Okay, could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, so do you mind taking a vote on the approval of the audit?
Yes. Mark Doyle?
Approved.
Kathy Bauer?
Approved.
Jamie Pecone?
Approved.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Al Torghiani?
Approved.
Oh, Tim Dean.
Approved.
Said you wanted to.
So thank you again, Jane and the staff for such a great.
Approved.
Okay. No other committees, right? Unfinished business there is none?
No.
Okay, new business. Our first subject is the consideration and approval of a preliminary resolution for Mirvo. And we're going to have Ed Kellogg and Jonathan Del Pas join us.
In person?
I believe.
Yeah, they were outside.
Morning.
Good morning.
Where should we sit?
Got another chair down there? If not, we can slide.
I've got one here.
We've gotten another one.
Let me bring it back.
Okay.
They got two up there?
Okay. So I'd like to introduce Ed Kellogg and Jonathan Del Pas. And they're going to talk to us a little bit about this project. And I want to, I want to open by saying that, you know, one of the, one of the things that we look for as a board is the support and endorsement of a project by the local taxing jurisdictions. And if there were ever a case when I can certainly say that it was reviewed and negotiated very deeply, this would be one of them. I actually listened to some of the board meeting, in particular, the school board meeting discussions, and it was, it was very, how would you say?
Interesting.
Very, very interesting, but, you know, what I would say to that in the end is that sometimes the best compromise is neither party's totally happy, which would probably be the case with those particular negotiations. But is there any, would you like to make some introductory remarks about your project?
Sure.
To us, I mean, we've all had a chance to sort of read the applications and everything, but maybe you could just, just talk real briefly about what it is.
Yeah, so this, so I'm Ed Kellogg, I'm a partner with Mirvo Beacon and also Mirvo Rhinebeck. Jonathan Del Pas is also a partner. He's also our in-house legal counsel. Just a little background on Mirvo. So it's a, it's a family-run, tightly-held company. We have, this will be our fifth resort. So we're in Skinny Apple, so Albany is a day spa, Rhinebeck, and then we'll be in Beacon. So Beacon was an exciting opportunity. It's kind of like Rhinebeck where, you know, Main Street Beacon is just robust now, much different than it was 20 years ago. So we acquired this property a year ago. We closed on it from another local developer. So we bought it outright. We were in the middle of our building design.
Talk about what it is.
What it is, yes. So it's an 85-room hotel, 20 spa rooms. We have about 115, 120-seat restaurant. So just like our other resorts, it's a three-legged stool. You know, they're all gonna open at once. They, they really rely heavily on each other. That is the first phase. It'll have hiking trails, a lawn area for, you know, tent weddings. It's all of our own employees and we don't contract anything out.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I think it's important. Could you talk about what it is that you bought today? What was the existing?
It was, it was formerly known as the Craig House Hospital. And it was for mental illness, there was drug and alcohol rehab. But Dr. Slocom purchased this in 1920s, I think, from the settlement camp. It was built by General Howland, who was a Civil War general, in 1859. And he lived there until 1886. Went to Europe, passed away in Europe, and his wife just turned over the property to the settlement camp. And eventually, they sold it to Dr. Slocom. So we are, we're going to totally restore the mansion. It's about 18,000 square feet. It'll have all of the common area attributes, seven suites upstairs. We're tearing down the 1978 hospital wing and dining wing and building a new chateau, which is where all of the rooms will be housed. Have seven grotto rooms, they're kind of underground rooms that look out into the Monet Gardens. So that's the first phase. You know, we're also going to have a farm on the property. 65 acres goes all the way to the Fishville Creek. So the farm's a future project. We have a small seven-acre subdivision parcel, which would be rental cottages. And then we have the Tyron to school, which General Howland built for the community. That'll end up being a recreation in passive area with, you know, tennis courts, things like that. Yeah, it goes all the way down to the creek. There's a waterfall there called Sucker Falls and used to be along the rail line. So this is, you know, this is the initial phase. We, we plan an opening in May of 2025. I have some slides, Tim.
Okay. Yes, that's fine.
Yep, so this is the area. You can see the mansion down in the bottom right corner. And then there is the, I'll stand up.
Empty the Hudson River.
That's the Hudson, yeah. We go back, Amanda. Yeah, so this is the Hudson. The creek is right down here. You can kind of see the falls and it empties in right here. You have Bennings Point is right there. And throw it out into the Hudson. This is Route 9D. Mount Beacon is a quarter mile to the north. That's the 78 hospital wing. This is the dining wing, which then will all come down. And we'll have new construction mainly in the same footprint. I just. This Grandview Avenue right down there, that goes to South Street, which goes to an abandoned bridge. So the city one day will rebuild that bridge. We don't know if it's for vehicular or pedestrian.
Well, just for point of reference, because I'm not familiar with the Beacon area, where would Route 52 be?
Main Street is like way up here to the north.
So this is farther south.
This is farther south. The city line, this is Grandview, and then the city line is right about here. So all of these houses used to be part of the 350-acre Howland estate. And so then you're down to Cold Springs down here. Yeah, so you're just, you know, a half a mile from the southern edge of the city.
But it's what, a mile and a half from the end of Main Street?
There's sidewalks all the way, you couldn't walk, you know, to hike, but. Did you say you're tearing down the, the old mansion? You said something? No, no, we're tearing down the hospital wing. Maybe you said the food service wing? Uh, this is over here. Oh, behind the mansion? We're building a new banquet and kitchen over here. Okay. It's almost in the same footprint. We'll have a few cottages right there. Isn't there a famous organ in that building? So this is, Withers was the original architect, and that was 1859. And Hunt was the architect who built the addition in 1873. And then in that is an organ. Some kind of 1872. Yeah, it's massive, right? Yeah, we'll, I think we have a picture in here. That's fine, I just. Well, they played it in 2012.
A what?
They played it in 2012. So, you know, some kids have gone in and you can walk behind where all the pipes are and everything, but it's, we're not sure what we're gonna do with it. You know, right now, that's gonna be like a seating area tied to the bar. It's, you know, it's a spectacular room. The ceilings are about 25 feet high. Yeah, so we'll, we don't, we don't know what it costs to restore it. Amanda, can you? She can hear me, right?
Yes, she can hear me.
Yeah, so this is a close-up. So this is, this is Withers and this is Hunt, right here. This stairway is actually 1978, but we kind of have to keep it for exiting. So we'll totally restore this. This will be an outdoor seating area eventually. Okay, Amanda. This is a view on the south side of the porch. And we'll end up maybe restoring this porch, but having a glass atrium, which you'll see in a future slide, that sits out here. But it was just a rolling lawn, so it was, Sergeant was the landscape architect, so he was Andrew Jackson Downing, that whole era of the mid-1800s. So it was just a sloping lawn that went all the way down to Grandview. And when they built the hospital, they really, you know, they carved, carved out all of this, this sloping lawn and created the path for the hospital wing.
How long has this building been vacant?
20 years.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And it's had, we're the sixth owner in 20 years.
I mean, it's a good thing it's built of stone and solid.
It's incredible how plumb and true it is still. It's just, it's all on stone foundations, so it's just. Okay, Amanda. You can keep going. Yeah, so this is the back. That's that dining wing. So Dr. Slocom, he was about, he was drug-free, basically. All of the, all of the treatment had to do with wellness. So he had a pool, hiking trails, there's an outdoor pool that is down by the creek. So this was just part of his program, but. And we're actually, this was a connector over to the hospital wing. We're gonna tear that down and build another connector that will be open-air, closed down below, and it'll actually have a waterfall in the middle. Okay, Amanda. Now, this is, this is the footprint of what we'll, so that's the mansion right here. That's the dining wing with above, and then these grotto rooms down below that look onto the Monet Gardens. So one of our features is having the Monet Gardens and ponds with some walking bridges and just lead down to the cottages. This is all the spa level, and then up above are rooms. Then this is the aqua terrace. If you've been to Rhinebeck, we have these outdoor hot tubs.
That's new construction?
That's all new construction. Yep.
That floor is all below elevation, though. That's all below ground, that's the base.
Yeah, you won't see this, like 90 is right here. This is underground. It looks out onto the gardens, but 90 is right here. So you're actually, you'll be looking at the second floor of rooms.
And that's all under.
What's the gray shading represent to the left of the structure?
Oh, it's just, we were, we were just showing the footprint of the buildings.
Okay. So is that, is that part of the parcel?
Yeah, yeah, we go right to, yeah, 65 acres, so we go from 9D to the Fishville Creek.
Okay.
Okay, Amanda.
That was because the elevation was running uphill. Here, you can see the site plan.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and the mansion will be, you know, this is all the, you know, this will be the dining, dining, bar area, that's the music room. There's an atrium right there, kitchen, banquet room. And then these are all guestrooms. We have 65 guestrooms in the chateau. Okay, Amanda. You can keep going again. And, oh, you know, it's in the focus. This is the top floor. We have laundry down there. The mansion will have three suites on the third floor and four on the second floor. Okay, you keep going, please? And you can keep going? Yep, so these are the elevations. So this view right here is the front of the mansion. That's the Withers, and then this is Hunt. And that's the walkway that will connect the main floor of the mansion over to the second floor, which are the rooms. And below that is the spa. So that's looking, you know, south. This is the view from the Monet Gardens. You can see some water right here, looking in. These are the grotto rooms. They're kind of like, the architects don't like, they're like hobbit rooms. But they're tall, they're full height. This will be the banquet, that's the atrium. The mansion is all right here. So we had to be careful with design so we weren't blocking the view of the mansion. We're working with SHPO on all the historic restoration. This is the south view. This building is actually 300 feet long, so you're looking at the south end of that long chateau building. And one of the things, you know, which is part of the reason we're here, is that the city of Beacon only allows stucco. It has to be, you know, true natural materials. Like in Rhinebeck, we have EFS, and a lot of the buildings are EFS. And, you know, you really can't tell the difference.
You said EFS for others that may not.
Exterior insulation finish system. It's a synthetic stucco. But in Beacon, you have to have real stucco. It's more expensive, it's harder to find, you know, tradesmen that do this. It's like, it's an old art.
Are there any limitations, any of the new construction with steep slopes or soils or wetland designations or anything?
And one of our site plans, so we do have some federal wetlands down by the old school. And there used to be this manicured lawn, and when they just let it go fallow 20 years ago, then everything became a wetland. And the city put in some drainage that dumps onto our property. So there's, we're working with a nationwide permit to get, you can fill half of an acre if you create half an acre. So we're working with the Corps of Engineers to do that. But otherwise, no, it does have a steep slope, and you will see on the plan.
Sorry, I'm the same sort of question. Sort of site remediation, are there sort of issues of toxic?
Brown?
Brown, or nothing like that?
No, no, the previous owner, Barry Cohn, started the whole environmental review. And we picked up on it and. No, no, the previous owner, Barry Cohn, started the whole environmental review, and we picked up on it, and, uh, you know, in the mansion, I mean, it's expensive because, you know, it's nineteen seventy eight, it was most recently painted, you know, there's things like that. Very little asbestos, you know, on the old boilers, which were taken out, and it's kind of surprising. They actually removed a lot of the vinyl flooring. So it's mostly lead paint. But, you know, it's, it's, it's a nine hundred thousand dollar demolition and abatement project. Yeah, just, that's how we're starting the project, and, and it takes three months, so.
It's remarkably clean site, though, in terms of, you know, underground storage tanks, nothing like that, leakage or anything.
Uh, okay, Amanda. So this, this is the view from ninety. You're looking at second, third floor rooms. That's the end of the mansion, the east end of the mansion with Hunt and Withers. This is looking at the, you're in the ponds, looking at the spa. So this is all spa level right here. And there'll be cabanas and outdoor bar, a sauna, cold plunge, two hot, hot tubs. And then the spa entrance is over at this end.
We were, we were discussing with SHPO the other day that, um, these elevations are a little bit misleading in terms of, of how you view the project. You almost have to look in conjunction with the site plan, because this building, for instance, it kind of have a line right here. It's, it's sort of bent. And you don't really get to see a lot of the three dimensional components of it. The idea architecturally is for it to be, to look kind of like it was historically a, a bunch of different buildings that were sort of added on at different dates. So it doesn't look like this one giant new building that's three hundred feet. So in the future, we'll have to show perspective drawings that do a better job of that.
Okay, Amanda. Yep, so this is, uh, why don't you go to, uh, yeah, you have this plan. So this is the master plan, um, the site plan, so, you know, the resort is right here. That's what Jonathan was saying. It's kind of a boomerang. You know, that's the mansion right there. This is the great lawn. Uh, there used to be a gatehouse, and there's a, a natural bridge right there, because General Howland owned all of that land there as well. You come down here, and there's going to be the farm right here, some cottages. But then this is, you can see these gray changes. It's a ninety foot drop from the upper third to the lower two thirds. We're actually putting in a funicular, which is like the Beacon Railway. You know, so that's going to, go, you'll take your room key, you'll jump in the funicular cab, go down to this level, uh, and then you can walk around. And there's trails everywhere. The Tyrona School is down here. There was a tennis court there. This is kind of an intermittent pond. You know, that's a, a pond that's probably ten feet deep. And then there's the Fishkill Creek. Um, this is Sucker Falls over here. There used to be a railway, uh, bridge that went all the way through. And then that's the, that's where the bridge is that the city's gonna rebuild to the old head factory. Madame Brett Park is right over here.
So there was, I'm just gonna ask Sarah, there was in the description, there was a, a mission of three cottages or something that you?
Yes, so, yeah, and we can leave that to Don and Liz to talk a little bit more of this.
Yeah, the first three cottages are right here. So the, in the initial phase, we could, we have approved up to five cottages, so we're building these three with the initial phase.
And those are to be for guests?
Rentals, yeah.
For guests?
Yeah, for guests, yeah. Everything is a rental here.
We're not planning on subdividing in some.
No ownership, yeah.
But long term or now? Just, you're talking day rates or?
They could stay a couple of weeks if they want.
Yeah, I just was wondering, uh, annual lease or something?
Okay, by the day, yeah. There's no Airbnb or anything like that.
Seven thirty days.
Isn't there a building there? Uh, is that the old school with the, the indoor, is there an indoor pool?
Yeah, so in the Tyrona School, there's an indoor pool. It's like a lap pool, which is all white subway tiles and.
It's beautiful outside building, right?
Yeah.
Looks like a church?
It looks just like, it's, it's the same architecture as the mansion. Yeah, it looks like a church.
What are your plans for that?
The basketball court.
Oh, wow. What are your plans for that? Is that building in?
That'll be like, um, you know, it might be a wedding venue, you know, just something, you know, an event building.
In phase one, we're planning on just stabilizing the other historic building, including the, the carriage house, the very small residential gatehouse here, and then the T-Rod.
Stabiling?
Uh, yeah, stabilizing.
Stabilizing, okay.
Correct. And, uh, cleaning up, one, make sure obviously it doesn't fall down and into disrepair between now and when we eventually have a better understanding of what the market demands these be. We don't have a clear picture of that, and I think we just want to press pause, and this is a big enough lift, you know, phase one as it is, so we'll let that come to us.
Okay, Amanda. Yeah, this is a closer view. So I, you know, um, some of these purple sites here, so there was, uh, we did an archaeological study, and there was one done back in two thousand and six, and we did, uh, that's a phase one. It's called Phase one A and one B, which is basically they're poking holes every, you know, a hundred feet. And we did a phase two, which they tightened up the spacing to about twenty five feet. So there's, there's historic and prehistoric sites. So the, down here is prehistoric sites, and, you know, with Native Americans, they wanted to be on level ground near the water. You know, so it's a likely spot. Uh, up here was a historic, which would be colonial times and prehistoric. As a result of our phase two, this is about a tenth of the size now. So we wanted to like, then hit a buffer. We wanted to see what it really was, so it's really shrunken. And SHPO is different standard than they did twenty years ago. So we did a whole bunch of shovel tests, and it really opened up some more property for us. So, but on this, you can have like a tent wedding. You can put fill over it. You just can't excavate.
Have, have you had to commence your archaeological discovery yet, or?
That's what this was, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're now, we had, SHPO signed off.
Okay.
Okay, Amanda.
So there's no ancient burial grounds or?
No. Nope. So is this the, uh, yeah, right. So one of the things, you know, with public benefit in the, you know, in addition to taxes. So we're making some improvements, and it, it didn't show on this, this master plan, but across the street is the, um, it's, it's called the settlement camp, and it's basically like a, like a fresh air fund. And it, you know, they, they built it in the fifties. Uh, it's a lot of disrepair right now, but we're improving their access going in. So if you're going southbound on ninety, you'll be able to take a left-hand turn.
Are they using it?
They use it, yeah. They don't use every building.
The pools there, right?
There's a pool there, yep. They have, uh, disc golf, like the frisbee, and supposedly it's one of the best courses in the east. You know, so, you know, people live there, and, uh, yeah, and so we're improving the access into there. But the biggest thing was the Greenway Trail. So the Greenway Trail goes on the west side of the creek. I mean, it's all approved. It's part of their master plan. And they came to us, and they said they wanted to see if they could have a spur on our side of the creek. But, you know, it's on private land, so the questions of liability and, you know, who built it. So we finally, uh, made an agreement with them that there's a sewer easement that comes right through here that the city has on our property. So we're gonna allow them to improve that sewer easement and have a walking trail on that. You know, it's got to be passive, like, you know, wood chips. You really can't fill, because as part of it's a federal wetland. But we worked on an agreement where they can, they can go through here, and then at this point, they'll kind of separate. You'll go to private trails back in here. Uh, and then they can wrap around, go by Sucker Falls, and then go down to the bridge. And the key to the trail over here is they have to improve the bridge, because that's where their parking is.
And who's gonna improve the bridge? The city?
The city.
If and when?
Yeah, that's the whole thing, right? There's no, there's no.
How do you, how do you maintain the restrictive access for people that may be utilizing this proposed Greenway, uh, spur into access to the rest of your property?
It's gonna be difficult. We're gonna have signage, you know, like, here, there's a point right here, we're gonna have a, a little gazebo and a gate that'll say, you know, a gate that it's not attached to a fence, that'll say, you know, um, uh, resort trails and then public trails, but you can prevent it.
You're not gonna put a fencing?
No, we're not gonna put a fence, no. Because some of our, our guests are gonna go walk on.
Sure.
They're gonna go walk on this trail also, and it's really cool once you get up here and go north of our property.
It's a big destination area, uh, Madame Brett Park and, and Fishkill Creek. It's.
But until they do that, they, they can use the other trail on the other side.
On the other side.
And that, and I guess the, um, I don't know who owns a Conrail. They're going to abandon the old rail line, you know, that's over there. That goes all the way up.
There's been talk about.
Fishkill Avenue by, uh, you know, the old mill.
Yeah, there's been talk about that whole thing around Beacon becoming a rail trail.
Right.
Our last project had that. Creek, Creekside had, we, we attached the Greenway Creekside.
All right.
Okay, Amanda, I think that was it.
So talk real quickly, in your application, you talked about part of this was, um, uh, green technology. Talk about that a little bit.
Oh, so the green technology, it's all geothermal heating.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, so heating and cooling, so which was given Reinbeck as well. Then they worked out. Uh, Reinbeck, it was like a five hundred thousand dollar premium, uh, with a seven year payback. You know, we're expecting, we've done all of our tests well. Much bigger buy-in, but, um, the payback should be about seven years as well. Yeah, we're not doing any solar. Solar is just still not competitive, you know?
So you talked a little bit, you know, obviously the taxing jurisdictions have agreed. But we still have some of an, some of an obligation to say, why, why do you need the money? If, what are the, if, if we didn't, what, what would happen?
Um, uh, we wouldn't be able to build what we're doing here.
Talk, just talk.
We just, so, you know, it's a fifty one million dollar construction cost, and it's a seventy three million dollar total cost, which includes effigy and, you know, linens and beds and all that. But, um, we just wouldn't be able to build, you know, a robust project like this. And if we weren't able to like build eighty five rooms, if you only built fifty rooms, then it doesn't justify a ten million dollar land purchase. But this is the initial phase, and so what, what this allows us to do, you know, with, with your benefit, is to reinvest in the property over the next twenty years. So we're, you know, like Reinbeck, we're doing stuff every day to reinvest. So, you know, it requires additional partner equity. Um, it requires, you know, cash flow being put back into the property. But there's, you know, we're gonna build the farm. We're gonna build these additional cottages. We have to restore, um, you know, the school eventually. So there's a lot of reinvestment that we have to make, you know, over the next several years. It's not, the whole thing isn't gonna be done in five years.
Do you anticipate a need to come back again for any other parts of this project?
No, we, we haven't thought about it, but we haven't, yeah, it's not really, it's not something we've just, we don't, we don't really, we know, like, the master plan, we're gonna have a farm, we're gonna have these cluster cottages, but we haven't gone into the detail and, and cost estimates or anything, too.
And just to add to that, um, you know, I don't think we have to educate anybody here about the kind of soaring inflated costs of, of construction materials right now.
You don't, you don't have to, but I think it's important that you discuss it, because the public also needs to understand.
Amanda, you've seen greater than forty percent cost inflation between when we built our Reinbeck project, which was the numbers we were originally kind of forecasting and using, uh, to estimate project costs when we're putting together the initial idea for the project. And since then, um, kind of the macro economy is, is elevated those substantially into kind of a runaway condition. The interest rates are obviously higher as well, um, so, and then we're, we're also kind of forecasting a recession. So the macro picture is certainly different. Uh, so if we didn't have financial assistance, I think, one, would the timing happen? Is, is quickly, certainly not. Could have happened at all. You know, and we, we put together our, you know, DVD, uh, pilot plan based on what the pro forma of the project needed in order to create a marketable investment, right? So it's just simply you wouldn't be able to get the equity that's required, which is a thirty five percent, um, equity for the project without the financial assistance.
Yeah, and there's, you know, there's also some additional costs, you know, like electrical gear. Electrical gear is taking, uh, it used to take switchgear, you know, eight to twelve weeks to get, and now it's seventy to eighty. So it, it affects the schedule, you know, so it, which adds cost to the project, and, you know, we're gonna have to pre-purchase some equipment just so we can get the clock running, yeah.
Have you seen the materials prices and those kind of delays falling back now that things have settled down a little bit?
Leveled up.
Commodities have, have come down, you know, material commodities have come down. Labor, not at all. It's kind of still running away.
Yeah, but anything that's, um, you know, like electrical gear, specialty equipment like that, it hasn't, it hasn't come down. It's just leveled off.
You, um, I know that you recently, part of your negotiations, again, I, I looked at some of them on the TV myself. Talk a little bit about outside of the agreement, what you've agreed to do with Beacon School District as, as an example, in, to gain support for the project.
Yeah, so I was in front of the school board, um, a few times, and, um, where, where we ended, their, their question was, you know, are we community minded? You know, so yes, we're community minded. We reinvest in every community that we're in. So it came down to the fact that they didn't really understand that, uh, right now, the project, you know, produces a hundred thousand dollars a year in total taxes. In our first full year, it's gonna be three fifty, and then it just keeps going up and up and up.
You said the project, right now, the property.
Property, yeah, the property, yeah.
Assessor, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, uh, you know, so the school district, you know, thought that they were leaving something on the table. And, you know, they weren't, because it's gonna be a significant amount of additional taxes, and we don't send any kids to the school. But, so they asked about the community benefit. What can you do? So we went back and forth. And, um, in the end, what we agreed to was a thirty thousand dollar a year payment for fifteen years to the community fund. And the community fund is, uh, our contribution to the community fund is supposed to be used for educational purposes. You know, hopefully, you know, they use it for hospitality. Duchess has a hospitality program now. Uh, Bosie's has a hospitality program. You know, so their students, you know, could go and participate in those, you know, those classes, and, um, you know, they're potential future employees for us, you know, or for anywhere. There's so many restaurants in Beacon. There's only one other hotel, but, um, you know, so that's what we hope the use is, but we agreed to thirty thousand a year. That, that's outside of, um, you know, any type of, any of the pilot, right?
And where is that money going to? I mean, it says the Beacon Foundation. Is that, is already established?
Well, they have a foundation that's already established, but, um, we don't think it's going to the foundation. So the foundation that has other purposes, you know, like, I, I'm in Spackenkill, and, you know, Spackenkill has a foundation, and, you know, that went for, you know, some football uniforms and things like that. And so we wanted the community fund to be separate, you know, Mirbo Community Fund, you know, to go for education programs.
Scholarships.
Yeah, and it hasn't been, um, you know, it hasn't been totally, um, wrapped up, but, um, trying to think of Dan's last name, the attorney for, uh, for the school board.
Larry?
No, Dan Larry works for us.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, he's our, our landlord.
Environmental.
But, um.
But anyway, you've, you've, you're trying to, it sounds like what you're trying to do is to control to some extent that you can. What, that it's not, you, you have, you, you have a specific desire to.
Right.
I mean, ob, obviously it would be complimentary to what you're doing, but also you want to encourage, you know, students to go into the culinary or the hospitality.
We want it to be a true community fund, not for it to fall to the bottom line of their general budget.
Exactly.
That's what we want.
Yes, okay, all right.
So then if it's for fifteen years at thirty thousand, this must be a typo. It says four hundred thousand. Shouldn't it be four fifty?
It says four fifty over here.
Yeah, but, yeah, the, the, the last one I got, just the blue cheat sheet has four hundred on it.
Oh, so that, yeah, that's a typo.
Okay, just because I did see the four fifty.
It should be four fifty.
It's four fifty.
Okay, um, I had a question.
Just, um, I know the pilot was obviously carefully negotiated. I'm just wondering, in terms of the, the, sort of the ending value, you have twenty five million as a, sort of the projected, uh, end value, which, you know, you're putting, uh, the purchase of the property and all the fifty million dollars of, um, construction costs and so on into it. That property's gonna be worth, uh, on paper, a lot more than that. So at that point in time, when it comes out of the pilot agreement, the assessor has the opportunity to evaluate, assess the property at full market value.
Right, yeah, so they, they're going to assess the way they assess from day one, right? And it's based upon income and expense, you know, it's not really, in the first few years, it'll be cost. That's all they can look at. You know, it's not an operating, uh, facility, but, uh, but then they'll do it on income and expense, so it's really up to the assessor to establish that assessment. You know, this is just a projection of what we think it will.
It's estimated, but it's actually gonna be assessed every year.
Every year, right, yeah. And it's up to her to say, hey, look, you know, we're gonna make this assessment. We're gonna keep it for three years, and it's totally up to her. And then every, all of the taxing jurisdictions have to. And it's totally up to her, uh, and then every, all of the taxing jurisdictions have to live with what she comes up with, you know?
The tax rate is set, but the assessed value can actually be higher.
Yeah, we all, we, and the tax rate can fluctuate too. I mean, they may change their tax rate in five years, you know?
But the, but the rates according to the, the declining exemption state is what guides the, the amount of the exemption. So, actually, the dollar amount that's estimated here could change depending on their.
Right.
Okay, I didn't actually fully understand.
We tried to look at it conservatively, she may estimate it as 30, you know, we don't know. The rate may go from $32.18 to $34, you know?
Why, why wouldn't it be listed at 73 million? That's the total of the project.
It's not based on cost, the, the assessment is based upon income and expense.
Once in trouble, year one, it's based on income and expense, against the law. And so, what we, we, we actually talked with the assessor, right? And we just looked for guidance on what is a reasonable initial estimate, and she used the 25 numbers, that's where we got it.
Yeah, most, you know, like, you know, Reinbeck is based upon income and expense, and, you know, they make their own, Reinbeck has a professional assessor, but, uh, so they make their own judgments, and they look at comparables, you know, within, um, it's difficult to do with, like, the only comp in Reinbeck is Beakman Arms, the only comp in Beacon is the Roundhouse, you know? So, they have to take a little bit bigger view, you know, but they can't compare this against a hotel in New York City, you know?
And you have the full right to challenge and all that stuff?
Yeah, oh, yeah, you can always challenge it, right.
But not when they're under a pilot. They can't challenge their assessor.
Alright, so the, the impact of the change in their assessment is what then?
So, so, the, it, so the percentage, so it's, uh, Marcus said the percentage of the pilot formers stays steady.
Right, yeah.
But the assessment and the tax rate can change.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and, uh, the, the assessment under a pilot, uh, cannot be, uh, it can't.
Challenge it.
Challenge it.
Yeah. So.
But this is just an illustration, yeah.
So, the only thing that's for sure to stay the same is the percentage of the exemption.
And, and the, and the, and as Jonathan stated, is these values were given to them by the C assessor as, as an estimate.
Yes.
Amy's up there.
Uh, Amy actually has been in for, since the beginning of this.
Of, of this meeting, of this project discussion, of the project discussion.
So, we did, we did notice that.
Okay.
Okay, so, bottom line, as you can see the difference between the full tax and the enhanced payment, are there other questions?
Financing.
Jamie?
Financing in place, it says, you know, construction will commence June of this year. Yeah, we're, we're starting in June, we open up in May of '25. Yeah, we haven't agreed upon term sheet financing.
Because we had delays with the High Park project, hospitality financing.
So, it's a combination of, you know, we partner, you know, and outside investors as well, then, uh, that makes up about 35% of the cost, and then the rest is financing. It's, uh, Don, it's Dan, uh, Dan Pettigro.
Yeah, that's, uh, Dan, I was just telling.
So, uh, Don Segliano, you had a question?
Yes, I do have several questions.
Okay.
Get ready. The applicant name is Mirbo of Beacon LLC. They are not the, they are not the owner of the real property, is that correct?
Yeah, we are.
Mirbo Beacon LLC is the owner of the real property, and the operating entity is?
Is the same, yeah.
Well, you list, you listed in here that Mirbo Companies LLC is the principal owner.
I think that was just because, uh, I don't know why I thought maybe it asked what is the majority owner of Mirbo Beacon LLC, and that is the Mirbo Companies LLC, but.
I think you're right, the question on the application is the principal owners of Mirbo Beacon LLC, which would then be Mirbo Companies.
Okay.
And then, you know, the managing company is called Mirbo Hospitality.
Okay, so who's gonna inure the, uh, any benefits of the personal property, equipment, the, the sales tax on the various sundry build-outs, is it gonna be the hospitality?
No, it's Mirbo Beacon.
Mirbo Beacon, good. I don't see a copy of the most recent company financial statement in the application package.
It was in the full packet that the board received.
It wasn't there, okay.
Yeah, the Mirbo Beacon has no financial statement.
Okay.
It's just created.
How did you calculate the value of the sales tax exemption?
Um, I, I believe we took the construction cost, uh, took a percentage of that, I wanna say 50%. We assumed 50% labor, labor, 50% materials, and then just calculated off the, the 50% uh, material.
Is that consistent with other projects?
Yeah, it's, it's always, you know, 45 to 50%.
And does that include the fit-out? You mentioned furniture, fixture, equipment, uh?
Yeah.
FF and E, the linens, dishware.
Anything we're purchasing.
Okay, so when you talk about your labor, um, on the application, very ambiguous, you only have two categories. 15 managerial staff members, and 85 other, what is the other? What does that represent?
So, that was, that was with the FTE, so, you know, we have housekeeping, laundry, uh, servers, uh, spa, uh?
Wouldn't the spa fall under professional category?
Well, our manager's.
33,000 is the opening salary, that's $15.64 an hour based on, it seems kind of low. And I was wondering if, if you could, in your secondary application, when you come back to us after the initial public hearing, if you can do, put greater clarity as to the range, I mean, it's, it's, it's too wide of a range to really see and get a benefit as to, as to what the employment levels are or aren't.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so we have, you know, we have our hourly, it's actually, you know, 1564, you know, that might be somebody just working, uh, 33,000, 30 hours a week, and we have a mix of, of part-time and full-time, but our, our hourly range right now in Reinbeck, we start at $16 and go up to about $25.
Okay.
That's for all of the staff level, uh, 25 might be a supervisor, uh, but 25 times 2,080 is $50,000, you know? So, there's some pretty well-paid, you know, staff, uh, hourly employees. The professionals are more, you know, like, the general manager, like, I'm the manager in Reinbeck, uh, you know, we have a spa director, a housekeeping director, a guest services director, so there's eight in the executive team, um, who are all making those higher salaries.
Yeah, like, they're not located under that.
We have, uh, we have, like.
And wouldn't be your particular position, because you're already engaged at, at a other location, that wouldn't be counted in terms of the employment category?
The position would be.
The position.
The position would be, yeah, it wouldn't be me.
No, okay, alright, yeah.
I'm leaving the day after we open Beacon. So, we're, yeah, so that position, you know, it, it's the same, um, structure in all of our properties, you know, it's a GM and a spa director, and, you know, uh, with massage therapists, you know, we have 27 in Reinbeck, you know, we need 32, but, uh, then there's a lead spa therapist.
Right, but they would be, wouldn't they be professional?
They're professional, and they actually, you know, they're in that higher level, because of the license, you know?
So, you could put them separate?
Yeah, and we can give them a change.
Again, for the, for the final application, sure, okay?
Um, and you mentioned, you, you mentioned you had, uh, you had, uh, you checked the box, all employees, our employees provided health benefits?
Yes.
Okay, so, is that after the statutory waiting period, is there a hourly?
90 days.
The number of hours required?
Well, they have to be.
Full-time equivalent?
They have to, um, you know, they have to work 32 hours.
Okay.
Um, they have to be there for 90 days. The spa therapists, therapists are a little bit different, because they have to give, I think, 21 treatments a week. That makes them full-time, uh, yeah, so there is some criteria to be able to, you know, be able to get into the program.
Anything else, Dan?
Well, I, I looked at the, you know, the, the ratio of the assets to the purchase. Sarah, you said that the financial information was in another packet that you've seen, so it's not in this packet, it's on the table?
Yeah, it's not on the table.
So, I'm getting back again to this, who's gonna inure the sales tax generation? Is this gonna be the operating company? Is the real estate company gonna inure any, so the real estate company is the operating company as well?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, um, the application was signed, should be signed by a managing member?
Yeah, it's gonna be signed by Jonathan.
But it doesn't denote on the application, it's a managing member, it just says member.
Okay.
I, I am a managing member of Mirbo Companies LLC, which is the majority owner of Mirbo Beacon, so I believe I am the proper.
Okay, but the, on the application, you should denote that it actually is signed by the managing member. So, at least.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Thanks, anything else, Dan? Counsel, do you have any comments to make about the, we had that brief discussion about the cottages?
Yes, um, the project description is very thorough, there's a lot, lot going on. At last minutes, it realized that reference to the three cottages was, was not made in the, uh, in the resolution itself, so that will be included, the three cottages will be included.
In the final resolution?
Both the, the notice of public hearing will be amended to include that. We would just ask you to, by oral motion, when the resolution is prepared, we will then suggest a oral motion to amend.
Okay, and that will be to the preliminary resolution?
That will be to the preliminary resolution.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, man, I know you, you guys do a great job, I've seen the one in Reinbeck, and I see how you're working. You stated, you said that you were performing the construction?
No, right now, we have an agreement with Consigli to be the construction manager, so we aren't subcontractors.
Right.
No, the construction manager is responsible for everything.
With them especially, local labor.
Yeah.
80%, they're not, they're not gonna get waivers out of, it's not gonna be easy to get a waiver for what you're doing.
90% has their commitment here.
90%.
From the 11 county, 11 counties, right?
Same as the DOL uses.
No, 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 it's not 11 counties.
It's nine counties.
Yeah.
It's what?
Nine counties.
Nine counties, okay, yeah.
You don't go north of Columbia.
But you had indicated 90% was your goal in the application.
Right, and I know the Stucco thing came right out, but you're using advanced wall, and they do that, you're using them up at, um, what do you call it, uh, the hotel in High Park, I think.
Well, we're not doing.
PC, but they're, they do that, they're local.
Yeah, but that's, that's PC.
Right, but I, I just, I know that you predominantly use local, but Consigli didn't do that a lot, and we can't sit back and let that happen anymore, because I get too much ego.
Yeah, we've had that conversation with them now, you know, we've discussed how important.
You can't talk to them in the right way.
They, they work for us, yeah.
It's gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, just make sure they understand it, what he's saying is, we will be very carefully watching that locally.
And you don't wanna pay that price.
It's, and it's actually something we're, included in our, uh, construction contract with them, that, that is an obligation.
Yeah.
Well, then, in your contract with them, you should put, if they cause you to lose funds because of this, that make them responsible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we can't make them do that, we can only hold back.
Yeah, yeah. They know the talent in him, because he knows them well enough.
Okay. Don Segliano, you have another question?
Yeah, I did, I did a couple, just on the, on the pro forma go-forward, was that included in that package? Okay. Purposes of, of this meeting, what do you think your sales tax generation's gonna be on a go-forward basis? From the retail side of the operation of the entity? How much sales tax you think that the operation will generate? Or, and, and in addition to that, the hotel bed tax?
Yeah, I know in Reinbeck, I'm pretty sure the hotel bed tax we paid so far is 400,000, you know, we've been open three and a half years.
So, about $100,000 a year?
Yeah.
That's, that, but that facility, but that facility is gonna be smaller.
Yeah, that's 50 rooms, so we have 85 here.
Was that part of, was that, any of that pro forma information provided in the package? It was, okay.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to the sales tax question.
Okay.
We're just focused on the, the initial upfront sales tax.
That's better than what it's getting now.
And, I mean, that is, that building, you know, it's, it's been sitting there.
Yeah.
For 20 years now, so.
It, it's been dormant, I mean, it, it's a jewel, that piece of property is a jewel, and, and they developed everything to the south in the Polo Fields and the other, other municipality, uh? Yeah. It's, it's the history, when you're in Beacon, the, the only problem is that the, the citizens of Beacon do not understand this pilot, when you hear the negativity coming out. You know, they don't understand what it's valued at now, and, and how the pilot works. I like the 30,000, I just hope somebody in Beacon watches it, but, uh, no, it's, it's a great project, and. I know, you know, the city, um, the city council, the mayor, and, and the city administrator, you know, they all get it. Yeah, they're, they're. They, they understand it, and, uh, and the city has been, and the planning board, so we have, we got this project approved in eight months, which is, you know, like warp speed for a project of this size, so the city planning board was wonderful to work with, so.
I think you're.
There's a lot of support.
Negotiations was more at the school district.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, there's really no residential component to this per se, so there's not gonna be students.
There's no kids.
It's not gonna increase the number of students in the school. Um, it, it, to the extent that people that work there have families, it could, but, um, okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, I know you, Tim, and I know Al, but who, who is everybody?
Fair question, we'll run around the room real quick, and we'll have them introduce themselves.
My name is Mark Doyle, um, my working life, I'm the manager of Fishkill Farms in, uh, Hubble Junction, we're an orchard and, yeah. So, we depend on tourism.
Great.
Don Segliano, my regular, uh, job is I work in Arnold moving and storage.
Oh, okay.
Perhaps you've heard of us?
They moved us into Reinbeck, yeah.
He's the CFO. And, I'm the CFO, I'm also Dutchess County legislator.
Okay, and retiring.
And, well, not, not quite yet. You may beat me.
No, not me, I know David Feldman very well.
Sure.
Don Capellino.
Yep.
Capellino works out in Eagan.
And Liz Capellino with the firm.
Jamie Paccone, uh, born and raised in Beacon, still have some investments there, uh, property management, and Dutchess, well, locally.
You know, Al?
Kathy Bauer, I'm with Salisbury Bank and Trust, I'm a regional branch manager.
Oh, okay, great.
My grandmother worked at Craig House.
Really?
Yes.
You know, a lot of people have said, well.
Was a nurse.
Some people say, well, I've been there, you never know if they're fair.
And you had to be rich.
And the most famous patient was?
So, there's, there was, uh, Truman Capote, Marilyn Monroe, Jackie Gleason, and hit the footprint of his.
Not more.
Willi's table, um, who else, uh, Zelda Fitzgerald.
JFK's sister with the lobotomy, right? That was the big famous.
Yeah, there was, and that was like in the, you know, uh, 40s and 50s, that era.
Gleason was a.
Those were recurring guys.
They were like, you know, always there.
Yeah, we saw, it's overwhelming support on this project, probably, more than anything we've done. We, we tend to go in relatively small regional markets who are very, um, they, they safeguard their community very highly, as they should. This project, they, it has been overwhelming support, I think, you know, there has been, of course, you'll always get a little vocal minority, right? But I think, for this project, we've been, we'd love to see, there's so much support, especially among kind of the historic lovers of Beacon, because it, it, its aim really is to preserve a historic wellness property, we say we're, we're just reimagining the wellness concept on a historic wellness property.
Okay, and one more thing, Tim, um, it, this isn't an exclusive resort, I mean, this is, we're, we're open to the public, you know? So, that, that was one of the challenges we had in Reinbeck, because of, because the architecture is kind of imposing, so people think it's a private club, it is not a private club, so we want, you know, the community walking through the mansion, you know? Spa, you know, we have spa members and.
Okay.
We'll be down here.
Good.
Okay, so, um, right now, we get back to the agenda, so that you can make sure that this is properly worded. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay, so I think it's appropriate that we see if there is support and, uh, for approval of a preliminary resolution for Mirbo of Beacon LLC to induce a project providing for a mortgage tax exemption, sales tax exemption, and a payment in lieu of taxes for approximately 73 million, for construction redevelopment of Seven Craig House Lane to construct a new 85-room spa resort and former Tyrone, at the former Tyrone Estate in Beacon, New York, and that is to be amended, that it includes the three cottages. And that is to be amended, that it includes the three cottages that are on the property that will be developed as part of this.
We have actual language.
Oh, you do?
Cert, that we would just like to, when, when you present it, then just make the oral motion list. Can you just tell where?
Okay.
Just on page two in paragraph A of the project description, at the end of little room and numeral three, we just add, and three garden cottages with two bedrooms each.
Okay. So if somebody is comfortable with that, would somebody be willing to make a motion?
To move.
Okay, Al, would somebody be willing to second?
Second.
Jamie? Okay, Sarah, would you?
Oh, Don had.
Done.
So before, to say that the resolution has written and has orally amended, is being presented to the board. That's what was moved and that was.
Al, is that good for the?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and Jamie for a second? Okay, Sarah, would you please, Mr. Turner, could you just establish again what the resolution is for? Okay, I'm gonna ask counsel to do that.
So the present oral motion to amend is to amend the project description to add three garden cottages with two bedrooms each.
Okay.
The entire resolution is barely for preliminary.
Yes.
A proof of preliminary agreement, go forward with the public hearing on this, the board will then.
Have a written.
Yeah.
New resolution.
Right, and, and to clarify one point, there was a, a full environmental review done by the City of Beacon Planning Board. It was a coordinated review. They did not include the IDA. It's an involved agency at the time. They may not have even thought that this was going to be coming before them. There's a, there's enough regulatory provision there, say that you are bound by that if it was done in good, missed in good faith. However, our practice always is to have you review that and make your own determination. Almost invariably, the board has adopted the thorough review done by the planning board, which looks at traffic studies and everything else. We just talked the kinds of things that Tom was speaking about as well. All of that is there. I will send the board, I already have the prepared email. Once you move, if you choose to move forward, I will then send you a link to the City of Beacon documentation, so you can review it as well. We've been through it and we're comfortable that it was a very thorough review, so you would, the final resolution may well, unless the board thinks otherwise, contain the language that says you will also adopt the findings made in the negative declaration done by the, by the City of Beacon Planning Board back in October.
And that can be in the final resolution?
That will be in the final resolution, not yet. You don't, you're not making any final determination.
And there's a public hearing to be held?
Yes.
Right?
And, and we included that resolution in our application.
Right.
But it's not absolutely necessary for us to make that statement.
Now.
Now, or, or even then.
Not, not, right, correct.
Kind of fine.
Okay, I just want.
Just one further clarification with regards to any exemption for real property taxes. It has no effect on any ad lorm taxes, a fire tax, a library district tax.
Those are.
Let me make sure that that's on the record. And, and when we do come back for the potential for a final review, can we have the actual amount of how much the property is paying and live, any library or special use districts which of course would be exempted? Thank you.
One, one other question. We mentioned three cottages. Isn't there an ability for five? Does that need to be? Yeah, the site plan approval includes five.
Five, but we're there only asking.
We're only, okay, it's for you right now.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion in a second, and I'm gonna ask Sarah to take a roll call vote to see where we are.
Okay. Mark Doyle?
Approve.
Kathy Bauer?
Approve.
Jamie Paccone?
Approve.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Al Torghiani?
Approved.
Amy Bombadiri?
No.
Approve.
Oh, no, no.
Not voting.
Oh, she's more.
I approve. I approve that.
She can vote via.
She can. She can be part of the forum, but she can vote.
Yes.
Okay. And Amy, how did you vote?
I approve.
Okay.
Cindy.
Approve.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you very much for your presentation. We will look forward to the results of the public hearing and I'm sure we'll be seeing.
And the date is set for, is it set?
So the public hearing date has not been set yet.
Needed to get this.
Yeah, we'll hopefully have it scheduled within the next two days or so.
Oh, okay, alright.
You know, for a couple of weeks from now.
Okay.
Somewhere in the, in the city.
Yeah. Do it there, at the courtroom?
Yeah.
Usually we do it.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate you.
Very much.
Thank you all so much. Yep.
Okay, next on the list is.
Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Oh, yes, okay, so Don Sagliano is accusing himself from the Eastdale discussion because he is now a tenant, resident, renter there.
Yes, yes, yes. I like it, Don.
Looks like they're, oh no.
Oh, yeah. I'm a kind of, I think you can go down there, stay there, but I went down there when it was operating.
I remember just bouncing through the property.
I haven't been down there in years. I'm gonna have to go back and see it.
Well, it didn't find.
If I wanna go back and see now and see it, it's gonna be completed.
Compare the total original Eastdale.
Good, how are you doing?
Oh, a few hours of. Probably.
Make sure we don't bring any more like total.
So I don't know, it is, maybe a table or just something.
All right, so I'd like to reconvene meeting again, noting that Don Sagliano has recused himself because he is a tenant at Eastdale and has a conflict. So John Hettinger is with us. Is Joe on video or he's? Okay, so we are here for consideration and approval of a resolution concerning Phase Three of the Eastdale Village Project, authorizing the executive director to execute certain documents. And Sarah, you just wanna refresh everybody's memory about the, what this is about? They've been in front of us about this already.
Yeah, so MHTC, well, so Phase Eastdale Residential Three is preparing to convert their construction loan into permanent financing. Typically, because MHTC, or Eastdale Residence Three is a related body of MHTC, meaning that MHTC is a majority owner of Residential Three, it was already contemplated in the master document that in these cases that Eastdale does not have to come back to the board for approval. But in this case, their permanent financing lender is asking for us to amend our documents to include additional terms in the mortgage documents in case of default. So because we're amending our documents, Eastdale is here to ask for approval.
And will this require a public hearing?
No.
Okay. And counsel is comfortable that the amendments do not in any way impinge or modify our obligations or responsibilities?
Right.
Okay. Just a quick comment, and maybe this will be helpful. Mark was mentioning that, you know, this, we've, we approved an overall plan and we've been reallocating it. Is there any way that you could get a chart?
Oh, yeah, we have a chart, yes.
That shows, you know, what's been reallocating.
We have a very complicated chart. We've been keeping track.
Charts, we have maps.
Yeah.
Very complicated and very awesome.
But I mean, I think the most important thing for the board to know is that we carefully watch the original application and make sure that we are not exceeding it in our reallocations. And that's the, if, if we were, in any, for any reason it required us to do that, then today we would have to.
We have to.
Okay, so, any questions? Can I get a motion to authorize this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jamie. Sarah, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. My doctor. Mark Doyle?
Approve.
Kathy Bauer?
Approved.
Amy Bombadiri?
Approved.
Jamie Paccone?
Approve.
Al Torghiani?
Approved.
Cindy.
Approved. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience today.
Yeah, exactly. Good to see you.
And then I do have, before you leave, John, I do have one FYI is also Eastdale Residential Two is going to be converting as well to a permanent financing, but they are not changing the terms.
That's one where we actually, Eastdale, so for Phase One A for Eastdale Residential Two and then also Eastdale Residential One, they previously came to the board for approval of these additional terms in the lender's documents. So they're doing supplemental financing, but we included in the resolution back in June of 2021 that any future financing has, has board approval.
Good, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Intelligent thing I've ever said.
Okay, so that, let's call Don Sagliano back in.
Amanda, if you could put the presentation up on the screen?
Okay, do we have a forum right now without Don Sagliano in the room? Okay, he's in conversation with somebody, but let's get started and he can, he can join us.
Yes, and it's just a presentation.
Yes.
So, I wanted to present as part of the IDA's contract with the LDC, the LDC outcomes for 2023. So while you have the numbers in front of you, we put a lovely PowerPoint presentation to kind of describe it. So, next slide. So for business attraction, we attended five trade shows last year. We had fifty-six requests for information for sites. We were able to land two, two projects. One is Can-Am Hudson Valley Logistics and one is a cheese shop in Red Hook, New York. So altogether, it's a, over seventy-five million dollar attract investment and a hundred and three new FTEs to be introduced in the county. Next slide. So our BRE program was actually quite busy last year, remains busy. We helped four companies apply for their minority women business enterprise designation. We had run a, an accelerator without walls program for our entrepreneurs and small businesses, which we had forty-three program participants participate in. They had six webinars as well as one-on-one coaching. We performed sixty-eight site visits to businesses and we've made over two hundred, but we made two hundred and seventeen unique referrals to our partners, or no. I'm sorry. We helped two hundred and seventeen businesses and made three hundred and thirty-seven referrals to our partner businesses. Also related to our business retention, as you know, we also finished up our micro-marketing program last year and we received an award from the Public Relations Society of America for the micro-marketing program that we ran. So, next slide. So this is the Gears program. Again, we had forty-three program participants, sixty webinars with over a hundred.
What do these gears stand for?
So.
What's that?
Gears is not, it's not really, it's not an acronym. It's just, they were just saying gears of a machine. And so.
Well, gear can't do anything without a cog.
Yeah. So maybe we're the cog, I don't know. So they had eighteen small sounding boards and twenty-one-on-one sessions. These are testimonies from some of the companies that participated in the program. One of the things that we found really successful is there was a lot of peer-to-peer networking. And so as a result, a lot of companies who participated were able to work together and they didn't realize that these services were available within the county. So we, that was a really great.
And where is this indicated in this document?
So it's in the business retention and expansion. It's kind of in this.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Okay.
All right, next slide. So our marketing continues to be strong. We have shown, you know, our website. Our views have gone, you know, have gone up twenty percent. Our Instagram and our LinkedIn and our Facebook participation also, you know, continues to grow. So we'll be working on that this year. Next slide. We had a very successful Earn Media in 2022. We had twenty-one article placements, which is, which is over four hundred and eighty percent more than what we had in 2021 in terms of impressions and four hundred percent in terms of adequacy over 2021. Some of the places are listed below where we appeared, Think Duchess appeared. Some trade magazines, regional news and lifestyle magazines. Next slide. I think we showed at a prior meeting our Think Duchess for Life video, which has gotten good response. Next slide. We had three events, very well-attended, the Business Networking Event, the Accelerate Hudson Valley and the 2022 Business Excellence Awards. We will be, we, this year, we will run the Accelerate Hudson Valley event again as well as the Business Excellence Awards. Next slide. A little embarrassing, but last year I was awarded the Economic Developer of the Year. Next slide. And then these are, you should be very familiar with, these were the three projects that closed last year that the IDA approved. And then the next slide is, these are the two new bond projects that were approved in 2022. So that concludes the presentation.
All right. Any questions for Sarah?
Okay. It's like, do we move the goalposts so that we don't have such a high percentage? No, I'm kidding.
So we did, actually, we did in, for our metrics for this coming year, we did increase some of them slightly because what we're seeing is the technical assistance that, I don't know if you remember, but pre-COVID, around seventy-five. And now we're seeing over two hundred, and we thought that was because of COVID and the assistance. But that has, we haven't seen that drop off. We've actually seen it increase. And I think part of it is people, like the small businesses, know that we exist and that we are able to help them. And so, and a lot of it is word of mouth. We ask them, have they heard of us? And they're, oh, you know.
Well, I think there's also a substantial amount of new, new small business formation happening. And, you know, where there is a possibility of a recession ahead of us. The one thing about Dutchess County is if people stop traveling far away, it benefits us because we're a day, vacation or a weekend vacation close by to the city, so. You know, tourism is a huge part of what we do.
Yeah, yeah. Food and beverage, we're seeing a lot of food and beverage companies that is very strong, a lot of entrepreneurs. I mean, that cheese shop was looking at other places and, but was really adamant of, you know, had found a place in Orange County and Ulster County, but kept, you know, calling us like, are you sure there's no place in Dutchess?
Well, we are very fortunate that, you know, many culinary students come here and love the area. And so, you know, we are very lucky in that regard. Okay. So next one is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the executive director of the IDA to enter an agreement with Dutchess County LDC for professional services. Sarah, do you wanna just cover that real quick?
So, yeah, so every year, the IDA contracts with the LDC to provide administrative services as well as professional service such as business attraction, business retention, expansion and, and some marketing. So hence the report that we've done, I just did, was a report on our activities. So it is in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Does anybody have any questions or discussions about that? Okay, I would entertain a motion from somebody to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Kathy, can I? Kathy, can I get a second? Thank you, Mark. Sarah, would you, let's take a roll call.
Mark Doyle?
Approve.
Kathy Bauer? Approved. Amy Bombadiri?
Approve.
Jamie Pacoan?
Approve.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Al Torghiani?
Approved.
And Tim Dean.
Approved. Did we need to approve the presentation with performance outcomes?
No.
Okay, we do need to discuss and approve the Paris report. So let's, why don't you take that?
Yes. So, oh.
I have a question on the Paris report.
Yes.
After she's.
Did you bring your award to the meeting?
No, no, this is, this is the award that we got for the micro-marketing.
Oh, okay. She was embarrassed. The Seinfeld with the.
Okay, so do you want to ask a question before she talks or after?
Yeah, just because I know it's important that we all review, obviously, our personal information and Paris report. And some, I don't know, Jane, do you complete this with Sarah or in unison?
We both completed, Jane does the initial completing of it. I then review it for accuracy, and then Jane reviews it for my accuracy, so it's the second.
So I'm looking at page five of seventy-two, and it lists the, okay. And, I don't know, are these questions supposed to be two-sided of the pages here? Because it says, has the board member appointed designate? And then there's a space, and then there's, I don't know, are there, is this page, is page of questions supposed to be divided in half? Because it says yes, I haven't appointed a designate. So when I interpret the reading of this, it says yes, unless the yes only applies to the right half of the page.
Most of us.
So.
Everyone else is no. Now, are you, are you?
I'm elected official.
Yes. That's a board member.
So what I'm saying is, does this yes refer to this, or does it refer to that? Because the other information trails from left to right.
Yeah, so this, it says, does the board member, this, so.
Yes.
So to you.
Yeah.
Also hold an elected or appointed municipal government position.
Okay.
So.
So it seems to me that this page is, is.
Should be bifurcated.
Is, should be bisected or whatever. I don't know if it says.
So.
I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It's too call.
It's too.
But, but this is how they have presented it.
We can't, we can't.
They do, you know.
We don't have a choice.
With their, their.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, anything else?
This is unfortunately not our formatting.
Yes, so, again, I'm hoping that people have had a chance to look at this stuff before the meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or questions about the content of this Paris report?
There's a couple of things I just wanted to point out.
Sure.
So that you should have noticed, a lot of it is from our audit, but there are some new projects that were entered into Paris.
Okay, give us a page number.
On page twenty of seventy-two. Is nine twenty-eight, nine thirty-two Duchess Turnpike, part of the Eastdale Village project. Page twenty-two of seventy-two is the Arthur May Redevelopment, which is a new project from last year. Page twenty-four of seventy-two is the Benura project. So what we have done, if you notice at the bottom right-hand, it says, is this the current, is the current year the last year of reporting? We have said yes, because what we've done is we've created a new entry called Vision Hotel for the assignment, so.
That will appear next year.
So it's actually going to appear here, so you'll see it in a minute. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention that we are.
I'm sorry, what page was that?
That was twenty-four.
Page twenty-four of seventy-two.
So down here in the bottom corner of that.
So we're closing out the project as Benura, because we can't, we're not allowed to change the title and the ownership. So in order to do that, we're closing out the, the project as Benura de Breezy, but we created a new project that you'll see later on called Vision Hotel.
Okay.
Page twenty-seven of seventy-two is the Dask Eastdale, that's the ambulatory, or. The surgical center. Page thirty-one of seventy-two is the Eastdale Residential Four. Page thirty-three of seventy-two is Three Eastdale Avenue. Page thirty-five of seventy-two is Thirty-four Eastdale Avenue. Page forty-two of seventy-two is Seven to Nineteen Eastdale Avenue.
So Mark, your chart shouldn't be complicated.
Yes.
But that's.
I know it exists, it's just.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
It's easier for us to see it.
What was that last one, Sarah?
Page forty-two. Forty-two of seventy-two. Seven to Nineteen Eastdale Avenue. Page sixty of seventy-two is One Duchess Phase Three. And then page sixty-nine of seventy-two is Vision Hotel.
So is there any requirement, and maybe it's been done already, I don't know, that we have to adopt the resolution, you know, removing the Benura established as Beijing, even though it's an existing project? Anything that we have to do from a compliance perspective?
We, we did, we did adopt the resolution at the time.
That's what I just felt like, yeah, which was some time ago.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So that is.
Okay, and then you've got a couple of other Paris documents that come.
Yes, so then we have the investment report. The one thing, just to note for the investment report, is the links, they're just placeholders to the general location of what page on our website they are. Once we, it's kind of like a catch-22, because it's our, our audit, it contains our investment report. So once our audit has been approved, then we can link it to the location of the audit on our website. So that will be replaced with that exact location, but right now, it's the general location over there on the page of our website. Then we have the procurement report, which shows purchases over the, over five thousand dollars made by the agency.
Okay, and what else?
And then the last one is the Dubai Financial Audit Report, which we could not complete until the audit was approved, so.
And, okay, and then, you know, to mention, as we all know, that the, who was in to do a, an initial audit? Where was that from?
RBT. RBT.
No, 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 I'm talking about the state agency controllers.
Oh, state controllers.
Came in, did a preliminary meeting with myself and Sarah, and, and we don't know if they will do a more in-depth audit or not, it's up to them to decide.
So they did a risk assessment, completed it, they told us that we'll get a final notification that there's going to be any further audit or work done, not for that.
And it's not uncommon to, we're done to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we need to, if I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the Paris report, the 2022 Paris reports in their entirety as described, would anybody be willing to make that motion?
Someone.
Thank you, Al, second.
A second.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Sarah, would you please take a vote for the Paris report?
Yes. Mark Doyle?
Approve.
Kathy Bauer? Approved. Amy Bombadiri?
Approve.
Jamie Pacoan?
Approve.
Don Sagliano?
Approved.
Al Torghiani?
Approved.
Tim Dean.
Approved. All right, is there anything else that needs to come before the idea? Okay, I will adjourn that meeting.